All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. Apologize that we're running a little bit late. So our first order tonight, order of business, and I believe Anthony Edwards is here to help us with our invocation, our soon-to-be council member and Reverend Anthony Edwards. So please stand and then remain standing, and we'll do the pledge of allegiance immediately following.
Thank you, Mayor. Best pray. Father God, we thank you, Lord, for blessing us to be able to assemble ourselves here together one more time. Father, we just pray, Father, that we continue to walk in wisdom and knowledge, Father, for what's best for our community. Lord, we seek your face first, Lord, and ask for your guidance, Father, for our mayor, for our city council, for all of our city officials and head of departments, Lord, that we can reason together and come together to what's best for our great city. We thank you, Lord, for all the things you've already done, all the things you're going to do, and the things that you're doing right now. These and all the blessings and favors we ask from your son, Jesus' name, and we all say amen.
Amen.
Would you join me with a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Thank you, Mr. Powell. All right, let the roll call show that everyone is present. And then next item is item C, our minutes.
Okay, I would move approval of, there we go. I move approval of the city council regular meeting minutes of November 7th, 2022, as presented. I mark, I move to accept and consider the planning and zoning commission minutes from October 6th, 2022, for the record. Consider accepting the historic preservation commission minutes of June 27th, 2022, for the record. Consider accepting the Casa Grande Youth Commission minutes of October 22, 2022, for the record, and considering accepting the Casa Grande Board of Adjustment minutes of September 22nd, '22. Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved as presented. Next item is item D, which is our claims against the city.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims dated November 2nd through 15th, 2022, as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second to approve the, or pay the claims of November 2nd through the 15th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain, Mayor.
Okay, want to abstain? Gloria, you got that?
Yes, sir. So noted.
Thank you. All right, next is item E, which is our meeting agenda. Does anybody have any changes to the agenda tonight? Larry, anything from staff?
Mr. Mayor, we have nothing other than the addendum that went out, which added item F under special presentations.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, seeing no changes, then entertain a motion with the amendment. So noted.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the agenda is approved as amended. Item F is special presentations. The first one I will have is the swearing-in of our new officers. Chief, you want to introduce them, and then I think Gloria will swear them in.
Mayor and council, as Gloria is coming up. Well, I would like to introduce you to our two newest additions to our departments, Officer Allen and Officer Smith, in keeping with our retention plans and our recruitment efforts. I'm very happy to say that both these young men have strong ties to Casa Grande and are Casa Grande residents.
I met them both the other day. They're tall. Good-looking, good-looking young men.
They are. Thanks, Mayor.
The mayor and I are not tall, so.
from Lucid. Are they all here? There they are. You guys want to come up front or come up to the podium over here?
Oops, can you get by?
Yep, got it. Good, good. Hey, well, first of all, so what we did was that Lucid got together with United Way, and they had a fundraiser for United Way, and these were the ambassadors at Lucid, raising money for the United Way. And they raised, just in this one program, I think it was a hundred, over $130,000 in one sitting. So amazing job. Congratulations to all of you. Please give them a round of applause. So somebody had suggested that the mayor should give them a key to the city, so I went out to Lucid, and I gave them all a key to the city. So I told them it doesn't open anything, though, so. But I wanted to do one more thing, and I wanted to have this proclamation read for you all. So this is, again, United Way Ambassador Day, and whereas the inaugural Lucid Motors United Way campaign took place in October of '22, whereas nine Lucid employees took on the roles of United Way Ambassador and worked tirelessly to encourage their peers to give back to the community. And whereas the focus was on United Way of Pinot County's education and financial stability programs, however, employees were able to donate to any nonprofit organization of their preference. United Way fights for the education and financial stability of every person in Pinot County. So therefore, I, Craig McFarland, Mayor of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, do hereby proclaim, and this was done on November 21st, November 21st, as United Way Ambassador Day, and recognizing Ray and Wendy and Travis and Ruben and Maribel and Maria and Lorenzo and Jeremy and Gabriela. So congratulations, you guys.
Looks like it a little bit.
Yeah. Looks like he's losing weight. Yeah, I think as our largest employer now in the city of Casa Grande with 3,000 employees, they are going to have an impact on this community, so thought it was good to recognize them.
Yes, it is.
All right, let's move on, and let's get to our consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Does anybody have anything you want to pull off? Anybody from the public? Okay, seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Of a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddlestone.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Howe.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. Kevin, can I ask you one favor? Can you get my glasses there on the podium up there? I can actually read, I just can't see anybody. Thank you. All right. All right, first item then is our, is our public comments. This is item H. This is an opportunity for the public to address the council. Just want to remind everybody to please give us your name and your address, and please keep your comments to three minutes, and remember that we, it's not on the agenda, so therefore we can't discuss it, but after everybody is done on their comments, we can ask for staff to follow up. So is there anybody here tonight who would like to address the city council? All right. Okay, seeing none, then I'll close the floor to the public comments. We'll move to item I, which is award of contracts. First item is I-1, and Kevin, this looks like it's yours.
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Aiken Gardner Construction for $75,000 plus a $10,000 contingency for a price not to exceed $85,000 for the effluent reuse pipeline and recharge pre-construction services contract. Staff, we have a wastewater treatment facility with a maximum disposal capacity of 6 million gallons a day for our treated effluent at the plant, and of course, we're treating more than that today. And what this project will do is we'll provide a project that will give us an additional 10 million gallons a day capacity by installing a reclaimed water distribution pipeline and infrastructure to provide valuable reclaimed water to the developments on the west side of the city, along with the new, new access, excess effluent discharge pipeline to a point near the Santa Cruz River for that discharge. It would also include a aquifer recharge basin to infiltrate up to 2.5 million gallons a day of effluent into the groundwater table, and the specific tasks associated with this contract is to have this contractor work with our design firm, which is Wilson and Company, and they'll provide value engineering and provide suggestions and recommendations to hopefully help drive the cost of this project down as they finish the final stages of design. They'll also be developing the guaranteed maximum price for the project and potentially multiple guaranteed maximum prices, like you've seen on some of the other GMPs for projects, where we do a GMP for long lead items like materials and things like that, equipment that's needed, to get those purchased before we do a final design and construction GMP for the projects. And then, of course, they'll develop a project schedule. We did budget sufficient funds in this year's capital projects, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? All right, seeing none, then, thank you, Kevin. I'll entertain a resolution for item I-1, please.
Resolution number 5484, a resolution of the council, the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the proposal from Aiken Gardner Construction LLC to provide pre-construction services as a construction manager at risk for the effluent reuse pipeline and recharge project, authorizing expenditure of public funds and authorizing execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve resolution 5484 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddlestone.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Howe.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next item is item I-2.
Yeah, and I failed to mention before the first item, all three of these first three items are, were part of Brian McBride's presentation at the city council study session, so these were the three projects that he described during that study session. And this is project number two. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Aiken Gardner Construction for pre-construction services for the west area wastewater, pardon me, the west area wastewater project at a pre-construction price for $75,000 with a $10,000 contingency for an amount not to exceed $85,000. This project is going to do several things. It will design and construct a 5600 gallon per minute lift station, expandable to 9,700 gallons per minute, including the 15-foot diameter wet well and three submersible pumps. It will also provide all the electric instrumentation in that lift station, as well as a new 18-inch diameter force main for approximately 14,000 linear feet. The horizontal directional drilling and trenching, the construction of this line underneath the Maricopa-CG Highway and Union Pacific Railroads, that's a big component of this project as well. And again, the contract will also include approximately 5,000 linear feet of 36- and 42-inch gravity sewer main connections, and that will service the industrial area to the south of the tracks, and approximately 3,000 linear feet of 15-inch gravity sewer line that will connect to the 36-inch sewer line. So they'll be developing the GMP and potentially multiple GIP, GMPs for this project, providing the value engineering as they finish the design for this project, and of course, putting the project schedule together. We did do a qualifications-based evaluation of firms that submitted their qualifications, and Aiken Gardner was chosen as the most preferred contract to use for this project. Again, we did budget for this project with two separate project numbers in our CIP budget this year, project 23057 and project 23058. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Anybody? Thank you, Kevin. All right, seeing no questions, then I'll call for a resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5485, a resolution of the council, the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the proposal from Aiken Gardner Construction LLC to provide pre-construction services as a construction manager at risk for the west area wastewater construction project, authorizing expenditure of public funds and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of resolution number 5485 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddlestone.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Howe.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next item is item I-4.
Actually, I, I.
I'm sorry, I-3. Sorry, jumped ahead.
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to execute a contract with PCL Construction Services Inc. for $75,000 plus a $10,000 contingency for their pre-construction services for the wastewater reclamation facilities upgraded, upgrades, pre-construction CMR services. Staff is recommending moving forward with this project. We currently have a 12 million gallon a day treatment plant capacity, and with all the growth, both residential and commercial, as well as all the industrial development, we are needing to expand the plant to a capacity of 18 million gallons a day. So that's what this project will do, is we'll design the improvements that are needed to ensure that treatment capacity, as well as looking at other items around the wastewater treatment facility, making sure that we don't need to make any other changes to ensure a dependability of that system. Again, this will be the pre-construction services, and that will develop the GMP or, in some cases, multiple GMPs for this project. They'll provide the value engineering, working through final designs, and then develop the construction schedule for this project. PCL Construction Services was the highest rated firm when we looked at all those that submitted for this specific project, and we did fund adequate funds in this year's CIP budget for this project. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? All right, thank you, Kevin. All right, seeing no questions from council, then I'll entertain a resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5486, a resolution of the council, the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the proposal from PCL Construction Services, Inc. to provide pre-construction services as a construction manager at risk for the water reclamation facility upgrades project, authorizing expenditure of public funds and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number 5486 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddlestone.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Howe.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, now item I-4.
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to execute a purchase agreement with Freightliner of Arizona in an amount not to exceed $2,453,950 for the purchase of five new crane carrier 40 chassis with Spartan 300 automated sideload bodies, and one Freightliner chassis with a McNeilus rearload refuse body for the use in our sanitation operations. The sanitation division currently has 11 sideload trucks. Nine of those are what we consider our front load, or our frontline trucks, with two in reserve when we do have mechanical problems, to provide the services for our collections of our solid waste. This project may sound familiar to council. Back in September, we brought a contract for the purchase of these five sideload vehicles to council. However, I did provide a timeline of the activities that took place. We were notified by the vendor that they were no longer able to provide those vehicles to us. So this is a new vendor, but same five, five load, five sideload trucks that we are purchasing through this contract. We're also adding the one rearload truck to this, and it is a demonstration unit from Freightliner, so it has less than 5,000 miles on it. It was used as a demonstration unit, but is in great shape, and we're getting a $50,000 price break on it. And the other thing is, we can't find this vehicle to purchase anywhere else, so this is one that we can purchase right away and put it into service immediately after, if we get approved for purchase. And we are asking to use the state contract for this purchase, and that does provide us anywhere from 23 to, or excuse me, 32 to 35% off of the manufactured retail price of these vehicles using the state contract. I did provide a breakdown of the accounting for this purchase request, but the total is $2,453,950, and then we, we had that identified in this year's budget under several different project numbers, so we did, I did include that for your review. But with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Kevin, this is a new tractor company, but the Spartan is still the same, right? Because the Spartan is the, is the back mechanism.
Both the, yeah, both the.
And Spartan's local, too.
I don't want to misspeak. Yes, the Spartan is our, our local sideload dealer. We've purchased, I believe, six, no, five sideload bodies from them, so this would be five new sideload bodies.
Very good.
On these chassis. They're the same chassis and, and basically the same vehicle that we had authorization to purchase, just for freightliner, in this case.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? I just want to make note that Spartan is a local company, too, so that's good for Casa Grande. Okay, seeing no comments or questions from council, then I'll entertain a resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5488, a resolution of the council, the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Freightliner of Arizona.
I don't want to misspeak, yes, the Spartan is our, our local side-load dealer, uh, we've purchased, uh, I believe, six, no, five, uh, side-load bodies from them, so this would be five new side-load bodies-
Very good.
-on these chassis. They're the same chassis, and, and basically the same, um, vehicle that we had authorization to purchase, just for moving-
Just different vendor.
-out of Freightliner, in this case.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? I just want to make note that Spartan is a local company, too, so that's good for Casa Grande. Okay, uh, seeing no comments or questions from council, then I'll entertain a resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number five-four-eight-eight, a resolution of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the proposal from Freightliner of Arizona, LLC, for the purchase of five new crane carrier side-load refuse trucks and one freightliner rear-load refuse truck, authorizing expenditure of public funds, authorizing the execution of a contract with or purchase order to Freightliner of Arizona, LLC, and authorizing the transfer of budget authority.
Mayor, I move resolution number five-four-eight-eight as presented.
Second.
Right, have a motion in a second, Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Powell.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, I-five, and this is, uh, approval of, on ordinance number three-three-five-six, this is, uh, professional services, we're going to reevaluate our free, our, uh, development impact fees, and Mr. McKenzie, you're up.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
It's debut.
I know, it's finally hit the hot seat, right? So, so the city manager is requesting authorization to enter into an agreement with Tischler Bice to provide a development impact fee analysis for necessary public services. These public services include wastewater, streets, public safety, uh, parks and recreation, and then general government infrastructure. And so, to kind of give mayor and council a little bit of context on this item, the last time that the city conducted a study and updated the development impact fees was back in two thousand nineteen, and so, within the Arizona revised state statute, um, within the development impact fees portion, there isn't a specific timeframe where you're supposed to do a development impact fee study. However, there is a timeframe for, uh, the infrastructure improvement plan and the land use assumptions, which is every five years. So what's ended up happening is, basically, it's, it's common practice and best practice that most municipalities just look at doing development impact fee studies every five years, which incorporates all of these items in one go. So that's kind of what we're recommending today. Uh, Tischler Bice Incorporated is the same organization that we worked with for the previous study, so they have a proven track record of doing good work for us. Um, they're recommending the same, almost identical eleven areas of focus as in the previous study, so it's going to be similar to how it was handled in the previous study. By allowing the city to conduct this development impact fee study, um, it'll allow the city to set, uh, development impact fees at a level to sustain the infrastructure and services need for new development in the growth that we're experiencing. And then, to kind of conclude, I just want to make it clear that by approving this ordinance tonight, uh, mayor and city council aren't approving new development impact fees, you're simply giving us authorization to conduct the study. So then, at a later date, we'll be able to come back to you with results of that study, and you can evaluate whether or not we need to adjust our development impact fees or not. Uh, so, the fiscal impact of this item is for eighty-seven thousand three-hundred-and-eighty dollars, and the, um, recommendation by city staff is for mayor and council to approve this item. And so, with that being said, I would be happy to answer any questions, and hopefully, if I don't, eh, know the answer, later Stephen can bail me out, so.
McKenzie, I do have a question.
Yeah.
On this, are we going to get a, a, are they going to, in this study, are they going to compare us to other like communities? Will we, will we be looking at other communities?
Yeah, so, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I, I'm not sure if they are going to, but that's definitely something we can evaluate, if you'd like us to. Uh, ultimately, these development impact fees, they are specific to each community, so they're going to evaluate where we are at, but if you want us to analyze other-
Well, I think, I think there's, there's pressure from the legislature, uh, the last year, and I believe it will come again this year-
Okay.
-in terms of fees, uh, not per se, impact fees, but fees and costs to builders to get product to the market.
Okay.
So, obviously, that's impact fees and other, you know, fees that the city may charge, so, uh, mostly impact fees. So, if, if we do this, we need, it, it, the timing is good, I think the timing is good, uh, because the legislature will be, I think, in, in a mood to try and tell cities what to do, as they usually do, and so, we need to have some backup, if you will, to say, well, this is in line.
Yeah.
You know, it's in line with, number one, what we need, from a community standpoint, and number two, it's, it's competitive in terms of the, the marketplace. So, that, just from a, from affordability standpoint, there's a lot of pressure on, on cities to kind of cut fees.
Okay, yeah, and we can definitely do that, Mayor, because I, I remember when I looked at the previous study, that's something that was brought up as well, so we can definitely get to do that.
Okay, good. Does anybody else have any questions or comments on that? Okay, thank you, McKenzie.
Yeah, no problem.
All right, seeing no more comments or questions, then I'll entertain an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number three-three-five-six, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the proposal for professional services from Tischler Bice, Inc., to provide a development impact fee study update, authorizing expenditure of public funds and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I need to approve ordinance number three-three-five-six as presented.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Powell.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next is, uh, item J, which is our boards and commissions. We are finally putting up the, uh, the transit study, and I see Deb here in the audience, who's our transit manager, wave your hand there, Deb. Is she here? No?
I didn't see her.
Nope.
She's hiding.
Never mind, she's hiding. Anyway, uh, she said, I thought she, oh wait, she said she wasn't going to come. I said, okay. So I just called her out, sorry, Deb. So, um, tonight, we do have, uh, five new members of the, uh, of the committee. Uh, the first three, um, Mr. Mike Henderson, which I see Mike here, Ralph Rela, and David, uh, Mati-
Maestas.
Maestas, excuse me, sorry, David, um, and their terms to expire on November twenty-first of twenty-twenty-five. So I'll present them first, because the other one has different terms, so, does anybody have any comments or questions? Thank you-
Thank you.
-Mike and company for, for serving, appreciate it. Appreciate everybody's, uh, participation in this process, so, um, anybody have any comments or questions?
Mayor, I do. No, I, I did want to, um, thank Mike, you know, Mike, thanks again for serving, he was actually on the Transit Advisory, um, Committee, uh, several years ago, and provided some great input, so I'm really glad that you're on there and able to give some of the history on, um, what the community input was at that time in this study with all the stakeholders, so thank you. Um, but, you know, I, the committee, I, you know, is, it's nice to see we have someone on there, um-
I think David's a past transit manager, too, isn't he?
David Maestas, yeah, from-
He's retired from Maricopa.
Right.
Yeah.
And then Ralph-
Lives here, though, lives here.
He's not here, is he?
No.
Okay.
No, but he lives here.
And then Fernando Molina is someone that has used Dial-A-Ride for many, many years, um, he's disabled and-
He's not.
-is going to be able to get us some really good in, um, input, and then James Hyman, and, you know, is a nice, um, I'm not going to say young, because I don't want to insult people that are older, but, you know, someone that, someone that gives a little bit different perspective, so it's really nice, I think, that committee, but isn't there one more person that we need for that committee?
Two.
There's two more. So if anyone's interested-
We interviewed one tonight, and I think we have two more applications.
So.
So, all right, so I need an approval for the three first.
I move to approve Mike Henderson, Ralph Rela, David Maestas, with terms expiring November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, congratulations to those three.
Yes.
And then, uh, the next two are Fernando Molina and James Hyman, uh, their terms to expire on November twenty-first of twenty-twenty-four, we're trying to stagger the terms so that not everybody is up at the same time, so.
I move to approve Fernando Molina and James Hyman, with terms expiring on November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
All right, have a motion in a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thanks to all of them, and congratulations to all of them. Uh, Deb will be reaching out to you, I think she said there's a meeting in December, so. Uh, item J is consider approval, uh, and appointment of Garrett Aldretti to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and with the term to expire on November seventh, is Garrett here? Oh, there you are.
Yes.
Thank you, Garrett, thank you for, uh, stepping up, appreciate it, and you're on a planning, uh, in a planning company in, out of Tucson, right?
Yeah, the planning center in downtown.
Yeah, and then you live here, so, thank you, thank you for stepping up. Um, any other questions? Yes, go ahead.
Another comment, and again, Garrett, it's so nice to have someone, you know, they graduated from Casa Grande Union High School, and went to ASU and U of A, so, um-
That's right.
And, and-
Half good. Sorry, Garrett, you're only half good.
And to have the experience that he has, and we're, we're happy that you're able to serve, and your enthusiasm is, is going to really help on that, um, committee, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion, oh, go ahead.
Who's he rooting for Friday, then? Who are you rooting for Friday?
Oh, I always am.
Yeah.
Good answer. Good answer.
You went the right way on that one. That was a fifty-fifty toss-up. All right.
My son lives on Shadow Ridge Drive also.
So Mayor, I approve the appointment of Garrett Aldretti to the Planning Commission, um, with the term expiring November seventh, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Right, have a motion in a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Garrett, and congratulations. Sir Paul will be tapping you soon. All right, next then is item K, these are our ordinances, resolutions, and other subjects requiring action by the council, item K-one. Scott?
I require the members of the council, items K-one and K-two are related this evening, related to the judicial selection process. Uh, staff had, uh, anticipated the potential passage of, of the first charter question that was put before voters that included a number of items, and, and it also included some adjustments on how our city judges selected. Obviously, that did not pass, and so we are, uh, entering to the, what has been the process since charter adoption nineteen-seventy-five. Uh, so we're recommending this evening, as the first item, that you pass an ordinance creating a judicial selection committee in accordance with provisions of the city charter and declaring emergency, so the process can move immediately. The charter prescribes a process which the city judges selected every two years, the term of the city judge is coterminous with that of the mayor. Uh, the judicial selection committee is created by ordinance, and the appointment of five qualified persons as service committee members is handled in separate motion, which will come after this, uh, to serve on the committee. The council has the ability to, in the ordinance, to prescribe operational parameters for the committee, uh, if you so choose to do this evening. Proposed ordinance only mirrors the charter requirement directed in the committee to forward at least two persons to fill the city judge position for the next term for council to consider. And again, emergency clauses are requested to allow the selection committee to begin its work as soon as possible, and right after this, uh, passage, then the, uh, the, the next item on the selection of committee members will ensue. Have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Anybody have any questions? All right, Gloria, then I'll entertain an ordinance number for K-one, please.
Ordinance number three-three-five-seven, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, creating a judicial selection committee, describing its duties and declaring an emergency.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number thirty-three fifty-seven and declaring an emergency.
Second.
Right, have a motion in a second, uh, Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Powell.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, K-two then is to consider the five residents for the city to serve on the twenty-twenty-two judicial selection committee, and, and they are, they were gathered through a poll of the council, and then, um, I put all the names together and came up with the chairman. Uh, the chairman is my selection, which is Bob Jackson, our past mayor, he also did this the last time we, we did the, uh, the committee, so, it's Bob Jackson is the chair, Brent Beddillan, Randy Robbins, Gilbert Figaro, and Lisa Flores. Is there anything you want to add to that, Scott?
No, sir, you've done everything you need to have.
Okay. All right, anybody have any questions or comments about these people, other than to thank them for their service, for sure? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the slate. So, actually, yeah, actually, I need an ordinance number, sorry, Gloria.
There's another ordinance.
Nope, no, it's just a motion, okay.
So moved.
Second.
All right, have a fir, a motion in a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you to all those who volunteered. Move to item, uh, our item L, items, which is our public meetings and public hearings. We'll start with item L-one, that's ordinance number one-one-seven-eight-point-four-two-nine. Paul, I'll hand it over to you.
Actually, Joseph Horn's going to make this presentation.
All right, Joe.
All right, sorry to disappoint you.
Whoa, did, was it in my voice or something?
All right, there we go.
There we go.
Uh, MKB Development is requesting a zone change. DSA twenty-two zero-zero-zero-eight-eight from single-family residential to planned area development on nineteen acres of land generally located east of Burris Road and north of Hila Ben Highway, you can see it highlighted, uh, below, it's just north of Western Manor subdivision. The applicant is requesting the zone change to develop a build-to-rent residential project, the proposed project will provide approximately two-hundred-and-thirty-eight single-family, or, excuse me, single and duplex-style rental units, and that's at approximately twelve dwelling units per acre. The site does not have certificate of assured water supply, so that's why they're utilizing the build-to-rent model. In looking at the review criteria, we cover the following criteria, all of it's been listed in your staff report, we're just going to concentrate on a few items tonight. The first one is going to be the conformance of the city's general plan, the area for this request is located in the neighborhood's general plan category, that category does allow sites under twenty acres to provide up to twenty dwelling units per acre. The proposed use is requesting twelve dwelling units per acre, which is our maximum allowed density for build-to-rent projects as set by the PAD Residential Design Guidelines. Uh, this request is in conformance with the, uh, twenty-thirty general plan. Uh, next, we're going to look at the interrelationship with conditions both on and off the property. Uh, the project's located north of the Western Manor, as I mentioned before, and it abuts some industrial land to the east and to the north. This use is anticipated to provide needed medium-density housing for the industrial corridors it grows. It will also create a great transitional use between the Western Manor subdivision and the surrounding industrial uses. Additionally, the PAD Residential Design Standards require a perimeter buffer within the build-to-rent sites to ensure the surrounding uses and its own residents are less likely to have compa, compatibility concerns. Staff does not anticipate any adverse effects on surrounding properties with this request. Next thing is traffic and public land dedications, I've combined them a little bit, uh, because they're related. The applicant is processing a single lot flat at the current time, that will be providing required right-of-way dedication for Burris Road, and that's going to be of seventy-five feet, you can see it highlighted in yellow a little bit. A traffic impact analysis was also provided, uh, that indicated the existing chip seal on Burris Road is sufficient to handle the traffic generated by this use. The city will be collecting a bond for the required half-street improvement and utilizing those funds when Burris Road is constructed. Uh, what we're trying to avoid is scalping of roads and building portions of the roads at, at one time and then later coming in, and they end up being a little bit different. So, additionally, the TIA does indicate that the applicant will be providing a right-turn lane going north onto Burris from Hila Ben Highway, so it alleviates some of that con, traffic off of Hila Ben Highway. In regards to notification, uh, we met or exceeded all requirements, uh, we did get a nearby resident had concerns with the traffic in the area, I did have, uh, multiple phone calls with him and conversations with him about this project. Uh, he understands the, the, that growth, with growth comes some traffic issues and stuff, and I believe he also had reached out to the city manager and the mayor, so, uh, we have, uh, spoken to him quite a bit, and kind of walked him through what's going to happen with Burris Road and how it's going to be, uh, work in the future for that area. So, in regards to the next steps for this project, uh, we did have an initial major site plan that was submitted, uh, currently, uh, been reviewed and back in their hands, we're, uh, still anticipating a ma, a new major site plan submittal that will go- site plan submittal that will go to the Planning Commission. We also have some comments on the plat, and that will eventually go to Planning Commission as well, and then the final plat will come back to City Council. Following those approvals, then they'll move into site development permit, final landscape plan, building permit, and public improvement permits. In conclusion, Planning Commission on a 6-0 vote recommends City Council approve DSA 2200088 as zone change from R1, single-family residential to PAD, Planned Area Development, for a build-to-rent project on 19 acres of land generally located east of Burris Road and north of the Hila Ben Highway with the following condition, and again, that's our standard right-of-way condition that's listed there. Can I answer any questions?
Is it single level?
There'll be two stories, I believe.
Okay.
We're still waiting on the next submittal of the site plan, so more evaluation will be done when that comes in. But I believe there's two-story units.
Okay.
And the image that you saw there was the clubhouse, I believe. And so that gives you kind of an idea of the architecture that they're looking at, at least with the first submittal.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
Do we have any, the roads obviously concern, any timeline, or, I know you had a good answer, Larry, but I can't find it.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Herman, there is not a specific timeline. The council may recall that a year ago, this was a dirt road, and the city, along with the county, has chip sealed this particular area. We do anticipate some level of development that will transpire. They'll be responsible for building their half-streets, if you will, in this area. However, there are some conflicts, potential conflicts, with the San Carlos irrigation district project there and others, and so there's some study that needs to go on in advance.
Staff has scheduled a meeting to kind of discuss kind of the opportunities and constraints of the area, along with the Skid and Skip Canal. There's gas lines in the area. There's multiple utility, electric utilities.
I think our major sewer line is there too, isn't it?
Excuse me?
Isn't our major sewer line along Burris there?
There is. Yeah, so we've combined a tsunami of different issues that we've got to kind of work around as we grow in that area.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Any other questions for Joe? Yes, Bob?
Yeah, my question is actually for the property to the west. One of your maps stated that it has assured water supply certificates on that property?
It does, and the reason we highlighted that is to make sure that you guys understand that we didn't isolate as a neighborhood, so we've got Western Manor, and it's not just blanketed with manufacturing industry, although it's closed. There are others that have potential to develop a single-family residential in the neighbor, in that area, so we haven't had any contact with that group, so we don't know if they're going to develop anytime soon, but they do have the ability to develop that way, or they could potentially subdivide it and use it for other means too.
For business.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right, seeing none. This is a public hearing, so I'm going to open the floor for any public comment on L1. If there's anybody here from the public would like to address the council, this is your opportunity on this item. All right, seeing nobody jump up, then I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'll call for a ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 1178.429, an ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from single-family residential to planned area development on property generally located east of Beris Road and north of Hila Ben Highway, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve ordinance 1178.429 as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbon?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pow?
No.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, next item is L2. This is also a public hearing, and this is on ordinance number 1178.194.7. Mr. Gagliardi.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. So this is a request for an amendment to a portion of the G Diamond Ranch Planned Area Development Zone District. G Diamond Ranch is quite a large PAD. It's made up of various land uses, but within the existing PAD lies a four-acre area just north of Cottonwood on the east side of the Colorado Street alignment, north of Mission Heights Prep School. It's currently designated for church uses. The request in front of you this evening is to amend that land use. It's currently designated as church and instead entitle it for mixed-use development, which would be comprised of commercial and multifamily development. It's four acres in size, and as you see with the zoning graphic, the proposal would go to the mixed-use designation. Now, we've yet to process a major site plan. That would be the next step of the approval process, but the applicant did provide a conceptual rendering of what a mixed-use development would look like. And as you see, there's, in this conceptual drawing, they've provided a commercial building along Colorado Street on the western part of the lot, and then behind the commercial building would be a multifamily building. However, this is just an example. It could develop any number of ways. That commercial building that you see in the front could have a second floor where there's residential units as well. The idea is that it would be mixed with both commercial and multifamily residential components. When reviewing PADs, it's subject to the following list of criteria, and the staff report evaluates these in detail, but I'm going to focus on these three highlighted items. The first one is the relationship with the plan to areas surrounding it. So the area to the west of the site, on the west side of Future Colorado Street, is an area that does have certificates of assured water supply, and a final plat was approved earlier in the year for a 316-lot, single-family subdivision. However, it's yet to be recorded. But then immediately abutting the site to the north and to the east is the Hancock-Cottonwood Build-to-Rent Developments, I think 330 rental units comprised of single-family and two-family structures. And then north of that is another project where an amendment was recently approved for additional multifamily. So there is quite a bit of multifamily in the area, of course, with the Mission Heights School to the south. I also want to point out that with the culmination of all these projects, we will have ultimately the extension of Colorado Street connecting Cottonwood on the south to Quartzon, as well as the extension of O'Neil where it currently stops at Legacy. It would connect all the way to Pier. The other criteria that I want to talk about is conformance with the general plan. This area is within the community corridor land use category, which does allow density up to 25 dwelling units per acre. And so this development could have at four acres as much as 100 units, but that's provided that there's also commercial development within those four acres as well. One of the goals of the general plan is to encourage variety in neighborhood design and development patterns, and so this mixed-use development will help contribute towards that goal. And of course, one of the action steps is to encourage a range of neighborhood types, densities, and building design within planned area developments throughout the city. The last criteria I want to talk about is conformance with the city's zoning ordinance. So it would be subject to the 2021 Residential Design Standards for multifamily development. Per these Residential Design Standards, any multifamily buildings within 50 feet of a single-family zone are limited to a maximum height of 28 feet, so that will help with compatibility issues. And then also proposed is a maximum height of 35 feet. And then their setbacks would be 15 feet from the front, which would be consistent with community corridor design standards, and then there would be a minimum of a 20-foot side and rear setback. Of course, these specifics and landscaping and matters of traffic, et cetera, would be further evaluated at the time of the major site plan. Regarding the public notification, it met all that is required by the city code. Up to this moment, there hasn't been any inquiries or comments made. Planning Commission heard this item on October 6th and on a unanimous vote, 6-0. They did recommend that City Council approve this amendment to the G Diamond Ranch PAD, amending this parcel from religious institutions use to mixed use, with the standard condition of record regarding the ability for the city to require right-of-way dedication prior to the time of development when it would ordinarily be dedicated. And that concludes the presentation.
All right, anybody have any comments or questions? Go ahead.
Actually, I really like this. I mean, just, you know, of course, we've been talking about a variety of different projects and plans and the whole mixed-use thing, so, yeah, I think it's a good location, especially when that road gets extended up through there and gives a little bit of variety to the community, so I really like this project.
Lisa's going to move in. Matt?
Has a flat roof, Lisa, I don't know.
Oh, it does have a flat roof.
No, but I want to agree with Councilmember Fitzgibbon about what a neat project. I think it's coming at a good time before all the houses are built there, so people know that it's going to be there by the time, you know, they're building houses there, hopefully, and it's a good transition from the school and from the multifamily build-to-rent project, and it'll help the road get through too. So I think it's a good time and a good place, and hopefully, it's something similar to what we're seeing here.
Anybody else? Any other comments or questions? All right, this is a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing on item L2 for tonight. If anybody in the audience would like to address the council on this item, this is your opportunity. All right, seeing nobody jump up, then I'll close the public hearing, and we'll call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 1178.194.7, an ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving a major amendment to G Diamond Ranch Planned Area Development for property generally located at the northeast corner of Cottonwood Lane and Colorado Street, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 1178.194.7 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbon?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pow?
Okay.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, next item is item L4. This is approval of ordinance number 1178.236.4.
So this is another amendment to a planned area development zone. This time, the request is an amendment to a portion of the Copper Sky Marketplace in Sonoran Heights PAD for the Village at Copper Sky, to familiarize council with where this is located. The subject area lies on the south side of Florence Boulevard, west of Cuchara's Court. It involves a 19.5-acre area of the Copper Sky Marketplace PAD and a 1.15 remnant of the Sonoran Heights PAD, and the request is to amend that 20.64-acre area that you see highlighted on the screen in order to accommodate a proposed 231-unit build-to-rent community. Currently, within that area, there is commercial uses, and it would be replaced with this medium-density, multifamily development. The other goal of this PAD amendment is to revise the circulation plan associated with the Copper Sky Marketplace PAD in order to reflect how this residential development functions within the undeveloped commercial portions of the PAD remnant. To give you an idea of what I'm talking about here is the existing PAD for Copper Sky Marketplaces on the top. It was approved for a variety of commercial uses, and it had assumed a layout of different retail pad sites up towards the street and large anchor stores towards the rear. If this amendment gets approved, basically, a third of it would be replaced with this build-to-rent development, and I'm going to talk more about the circulation on an upcoming slide, but there was a lot of focus spent on how these two uses would tie into one another. When reviewing amendments to PADs, these are the criteria that are evaluated, and I'm going to focus on these three highlighted items, the first being the conformance to the city's general plan. Just like the G Diamond Ranch presentation, this property is also within the community corridor category, which does allow density up to 25 dwelling units per acre. The proposed density with this development is 11.57 dwelling units per acre, so it does comply with the density maximum. And one of the intentions of the community corridor category is to provide a mixture of uses and building sizes, and so introducing multifamily residential product here along the Florence Boulevard corridor, where it currently is predominantly commercial, will accomplish just that, which ties into another criteria that I want to talk about with regard to conformance with zoning. That was one of the concerns when entertaining the idea of putting medium-density residential here. Is that going to be a detriment to the Florence Boulevard corridor, since it is an entryway into town? A lot of the vacant properties should potentially lend itself to commercial retail office development, but when you look at the corridor from I-10 West, and I have it going just past Henness on this graphic, you know, you can see the vast majority of the property on both sides of Florence is designated for commercial and office. If this amendment gets approved, this will be the first multifamily product that actually touches Florence Boulevard west of I-10. Of course, on the east side of I-10, you have Mission Royale, but then when you go west of I-10, you know, when you think about different neighborhoods, the closest would be Fiesta Grande, but even that doesn't technically make contact with Florence. But specifically with regard to conformance with zoning, we looked at its compliance with the 2021 Residential Design Standards, and it does meet all of the design criteria with one specific exception, and I want to explain that here using this graphic. So to the east of the site is a 50-foot area that is zoned R2, and it serves as an open-space landscape tract for the Sonoran Heights neighborhood, which predominantly lies to the south, but that serves that, that 50-foot strip serves as kind of a landscaped gateway But that serves that, that 50-foot strip serves as kind of a landscaped gateway for the Sonoran Heights property. And to the south of the site, it's also zoned R2, it's part of Sonoran Heights, but within that area, there's an 80-foot gap between the build-to-rent community and the first single-family residential lot. And the reason why I point that out is because one of the residential design standards say that when abutting a single-family area, the setback for the build-to-rent has to be 25 feet. And ordinarily, that would be important to ensure there's compatibility between the single-family neighborhood and the build-for-rent neighborhood. But as you can see here, providing a 25-foot setback really wouldn't accomplish much since you have a 50-foot open-space area between Cuchara's and this development and an 80-foot open-space area to the south. So their exception request is only a 10-foot setback, and staff and planning commission were comfortable with that deviation, given the fact that there's quite a bit of open space that lies between this proposed development and the single-family areas. And I should also note that this is all proposed to be single-story, so there's not an impact in terms of height. The other criteria that I want to talk about is impact of the plan on existing and anticipated traffic conditions. If you recall, I mentioned one of the things that we looked at when we were considering the amendment to this P.A.D. was how this multi-family area was gonna tie into the previously-approved circulation plan for Village at Copper Sky. And I wanted just to walk through that with you a little bit. So along the north part of the site, they are intending to provide shared access between the commercial development and the entry into the multi-family area. There does, there is going to remain an access drive onto Florence, but it will be ride-in, ride-out, and that's actually going to be the secondary access point for this development. There will be a new turn lane, however, to access that ride-in, ride-out drive. And then they're going to rely on an access point onto Cuchara's for their primary access. And so that's going to involve improved, half-street improvements to Cuchara's, as well as the construction of a traffic signal at Cuchara's. And that will be coordinated with the Sonoran Heights development, which lies to the south. With regard to our notification efforts, we followed that which is required by code. There were no public comments received. And Planning Commission did hear this at their October 6th meeting, and they did vote unanimously to forward to City Council a recommendation to approve the amendment to the Copper Sky and Sonoran Heights P.A.D.s with the condition of record that we've been making fairly standardized on many of these amendments with regard to right-of-way dedication. And that's the end of my presentation.
Questions from council? All right, yeah, Lisa, go ahead.
Maybe I have a question. You know, of course, the traffic concerns you with, with the first multi-family development rate there on Florence Boulevard, but what I like about it, again, is offering a variety. And I think having it in this location, you know, allows people, because there's, there's some walkable stuff there. It's gonna be in our transit designated service area, so someone can even take the, you know, the, the transit system to the rec center to, to work out if they don't want to drive or to, you know, a restaurant down the street. So that, so that, I mean, I, I think, I'd like the idea of that being there and, and giving a variety to, you know, people that want that type of housing.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Bob?
James, this, uh, this is just a conceptual plan? That's, that's not, or is that how it's gonna be laid out?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Huddlestone, for the purposes of the P.A.D., this is seen as a conceptual plan. However, there has been already contingent approval of the major site plan pending the outcome of this P.A.D. amendment. So I, I'd be happy to answer specific questions if you'd like, as far as what you're seeing on the...
Well, I, I was just going to comment, it looks like it has a pool and a clubhouse and tennis courts of some kind, and so I, I, I think it'll be a nice addition to the, to the area.
Anything else? All right, again, this is a public hearing, so I'm gonna open the public hearing on item L3. If there's anybody here who would like to address the council on item L3, that was your opportunity. Remember to state your name and give us your address and keep your comments to three minutes, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Tom Yalvin with Rose Law Group, 7144 East Stetson Drive in Scottsdale. I'm not gonna take the full three minutes. I just want to come down here tonight and express our appreciation to staff for everything that they've done, working with us, and the presentation tonight they gave was extremely thorough. And also just want to say that we came down here tonight just to express our gratitude for your time and consideration for a project we're very proud of. Thank you.
Are they gonna build it? Okay. That's, that's only, my only question.
Are they going to?
All right, good.
That head's not back there.
Good. That's even better. Any, any other public comment? All right, well, thank you, Tom, and, uh, for coming down, braving I-10. All right, seeing no more comments, then I will close the public hearing and call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 1178.138.4. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving a major amendment to Copper Sky Marketplace planned area development for property generally located near the southwest corner of Florence Boulevard in Cuchara's Court, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of ordinance number 1178.138.4 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll, oh wait, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddlestone.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pow.
Yes, I think you're gonna build it the way your head moves, so I'm going for it.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right. Okay, the next item is item L4. This is also a public hearing, and this is for ordinance number 1178.236.4. And are you gonna handle this one, Paul, or is...
It's me again.
Oh, all right. You're just here for support.
Right. I might, as, as I present, I might be scooting closer and closer to Paul, we'll see. So this is a request to amend another P.A.D. This time, the request pertains to an amendment to the Casa Grande Regional Shopping Center planned area development, otherwise known as the Promenade. And it's to accommodate a proposed hotel, which will be dual-branded, it's Town Place Suites and Fairfield by Marriott. The proposed location is within the southeast corner of the Promenade Shopping Center on a proxim- approximately 3.5-acre site just east of the Wells Fargo Bank, south of PetSmart. Marriott is seeking approval to construct a 65-foot-tall, four-story hotel within that area. It's known as Lot 14 within the Promenade. The zoning, which is a planned area development zone, allows hotels and other commercial uses within the shopping center, however, up to a height of 45 feet. The only exception within the P.A.D. is actually theaters can go up to a height of 60 feet. So this amendment request would allow a hotel on Lot 14 only to have a height of 65, where 45 is currently the maximum height permitted. In conjunction with this P.A.D. amendment request, applicant has also provided a major site plan, and that's scheduled for city planning commission consideration pending the outcome of the request to amend the P.A.D. for the height. But they have provided landscaping details, and like I mentioned, the major site plan itself helps evaluate the placement of the building to have a better understanding of, of its impact on surrounding properties. Here's an example of the elevations that have been presented that are part of the major site plan package. The top pictures the south elevation, so the building as you would see it if you were standing along Florence. The bottom pictures the north elevation, so what you would see if you were standing at PetSmart, for example, and then the west and east elevations. When reviewing P.A.D. amendments, it's subject to these criteria, and the staff report does discuss these in greater detail, but I'm gonna talk about these highlighted ones specifically because I thought they were the most important for the review. And the first one is the relationship of the plan to conditions both on and off the property. So this criteria mainly speaks to compatibility, which was the greatest concern with this request. When looking at the overall compatibility of the site, it's, it's interesting that on the north side of Florence Boulevard, there really is a compatibility issue. It's all commercial all the way around. You have, within the Promenade itself, as I mentioned, very comparable heights, 45 to 60 feet. And what's interesting is directly to the east of the site is another P.A.D. It's part of the Casa Grande Commons P.A.D. that actually allows building heights for commercial development up to 100 feet. So there's quite a bit of height going on, on the north side of Florence. But on the south side of Florence is where there's the most concern, because you do have the Mission Royale, single-family, age-restricted neighborhood, and these are all single-story homes. And, and that's probably why the commercial area of Mission Royale on the south side of Florence has its height maximum of 35. There's quite a difference between the maximum height on the south side of the highway as opposed to the maximum height on the north side of Highway 287 Florence Boulevard. And, you know, that was done by design because the commercial area on the south side of Florence is directly abutting the residences, but given that you do have Florence Boulevard separating the Promenade from Mission Royale, I believe is what contributed to the initial support for the greater heights. Now, there have been a number of concerns expressed by residents within the Mission Royale community about the proposed height, and I wanted to talk to you about the mitigating factors that help address that concern. So firstly, between both developments lie landscape tracks. Along the Promenade, there's a 30-foot landscape tract that sits on the north side of Florence between Florence and the Promenade development. And then on the south side of Florence is a landscape tract that belongs to the Mission Royale HOA that lies between Florence and the Mission Royale neighborhood, and then it's narrowest at 75 feet. The building is proposed to be approximately 85 feet from the front property line, so even though it is a tall building, it's not situated in a way that is as close to the property line as it could be. In P.A.D.s, the setback is required to, the minimum setback is required to approximate its height from the P.A.D. boundary. So it could have been oriented in such a way that it could have been 65 feet from the front property line with the proposed 65-foot-tall building. If it were 45 feet tall, it could be as close as 45 feet from the front property line, but in this case, it sits 85 feet north of the front property line. And then the right-of-way itself for State Highway 287 Florence Boulevard is 135 feet wide, so together, there's a 300-foot distance between the backs of the single-family residential lots and the hotel. Also, I wanted to discuss the landscape tracks just a little bit more. So in front of the proposed hotel, they are proposing to provide 24 36-inch box trees in front, directly in front of the site on the north side of Florence Boulevard, and then 20 additional 36-inch box trees are planned along the rest of the perimeter. And so it, it will provide a lot of screening and density, at least on the north side of Florence Boulevard. And then, of course, there's opportunity within the Mission Royale landscape tract with 75 feet being the minimum distance for there to be ultimately opportunity for more landscaping over time. An idea of the 36-inch box tree size, what that means, there's a, a picture there of what that would look like. Our city code requires a minimum of a 15-gallon size, which would be in a 15-gallon bucket, but the 36-inch box allows the tree to be more established and get taller before it's As I mentioned, multiple residents within the Mission Royale neighborhood have expressed opposition to the hotel primarily due to its height, and some have suggested that Marriott should plant mature trees within the Mission Royale HOA tract to help mask the scale of the building or to help offset whatever detriments that they foresee with the hotel situated where it is. The applicant is here this evening to speak to discussions that he's willing to have with the Mission Royale neighborhood. It, it's been expressed in past discussions that he's definitely willing to work with the Mission Royale HOA. However, there isn't any sort of specific plan in terms of, of what outcome would come of that, but, but only that he is willing to help address some of their concerns. The next criteria that I want to talk about is the conformance to the city's general plan. This area is within the commerce and business category, and specifically hospitality or hotels are specifically listed as, as an appropriate land use. And new development shall be designed to minimize adverse impact upon surrounding existing land uses. And we believe based on the existence of the two landscape tracks paralleling Florence to the north and south, and the 300-foot distance between the backs of the lots and the hotel do help minimize the adverse impact. Regarding the notification process, it was quite extensive. Initially, there was a notification to owners of property within 500 feet advising that we have the application under review. Due to the concerns that we received, there was a neighborhood meeting scheduled, and so that was held, and approximately 18 residents attended and expressed their concerns. And then as the hearings were scheduled, further notification was made to the same 500-foot distance, which had always included the Mission Royale HOA. There have been eight residents throughout the Mission Royale neighborhood who have provided letters in opposition, and they've been included in your packets. And to summarize the concerns, it was felt that the building is too big and it's out of of place. Two stories would be more appropriate, even if it required more land to accommodate the hotel. There's a belief that the, there's a reason why the P A D limits the height for most buildings to forty-five feet. The original rule should be followed. Some felt that the building should be further away from a residential area, such as on the other side of I-ten near Cracker Barrel. There was concern about the north-facing views of the residences that are paralleling Florence, being affected by this large building, concerns about depreciation of property value. There was also some concern regarding traffic, and I'd be happy to talk about that with you in greater detail. However, with the major site plan, they have to provide a traffic impact analysis, and essentially, the shopping center was built with an anticipated amount of traffic, and so the hotel itself doesn't actually contribute any more trips than a commercial development would on there. And there are some modifications being made as a result of an updated traffic report to help offset the difference, the passage of time when that initial traffic impact analysis was made and the initial improvements made to Florence and today. And then there was also a point made that while there is benefit to the city and to the promenade businesses, there was sort of the belief that the Mission Royale residents really wouldn't have a direct benefit to the hotel. But at the October sixth Planning Commission meeting, there was no members of the public who spoke in opposition, and Planning Commission did vote on five to one to forward a recommendation to council to approve this P A D amendment, subject to a condition just clarifying that the hotel shall be limited to no more than four stories. And just in terms of the next steps, as I mentioned, should this be approved, Planning Commission would consider this major site plan for the project at its December first meeting, which is next Thursday. And that concludes my presentation.
Go ahead, Mr. Lavender.
James, can you go back to the slide that you had all the setbacks on? That's right, that one right there.
I can, is this one better?
That one's perfect. So where it says eighty-five feet, the maximum height currently on that is forty-five feet, correct?
Correct.
Though the lot to the east, that looks like dirt right there in front of that car, did I understand you, the maximum height there is a hundred feet?
Correct. It's actually because it's in a different zone district, and for offices and hospitals, the height can be up to a hundred feet.
Thank you. Mr. Powell?
I know quite a few of the people that have land that has been agricultural or used otherwise that really don't want a big, high hotel out there. They've spent their money on their place, and they, I think, if you went to four stories, you might get by with it, but I, what are they planning on, how high?
Four stories.
It would be four stories, but sixty-five-foot-tall maximum.
Four stories.
Is that what, is that what that'd be, is sixty-five feet?
When you put the, you put the cover on it so you can put your conditioning behind it, the ferret, there's a ferret, so, yeah, it's, but it's still four stories.
Well, there's a whole bunch of them that don't like it, that have property out there because they've spent a lot of money and time, and they're citizens of our community that have been in those places for a long time. So if they could drop that down or make it, it just, you know, when you live where they do, they've got beautiful places, especially to the east, along the street that goes there, but I don't think it'd be well received.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? Lisa?
Well, first of all, I want to, you know, thank the staff and the applicant for really hearing out the neighbors, you know, and I was really impressed when I was reading through the notes that the applicant was, you know, said that, I'm not sure where the applicant is. Okay, thank you for coming. No, but I, but I appreciated how you said, look, I want to be a good neighbor. I want to, you know, see what I can do to work with the neighbors. So I think, you know, it's really nice, you know, to put the bigger box trees, you know, to give a buffer, but, you know, three hundred feet, it's not like, yeah, it's a, it's a long ways, and so I, but I appreciate you still willing to work with them and, you know, whatever, with the homeowners association. But, I mean, these people did buy the house, knowing that it's commercial across the street, and they're going to have, you know, sixty feet minimum and then a hundred feet just, you know, across the way. So I do believe it's a, it's a great product. We need something like this in our community, you know, with the college, you know, there, you know, the hospitals down the road, with the growth in our community. I think it's a, it's a beautiful project for the community, but of course, I want the citizens, the neighbors to know that, you know, they were heard and that you're working with them to see what they can do with ever landscape buffer, but I do feel that this plan, what they came back with, is very reasonable, and I think it would be a great place to put something like this. And four stories, I don't, I don't have a problem with the, I think it's a great location for it.
Well, you don't live there, that's why.
Yeah, no.
You don't, you don't have any.
Anybody else have any other?
Understanding of what those people go through.
But they.
Go ahead, Matt.
You guys, you guys drove through town and think everything is really good, but the people that have done this and have their homes there don't want to see that changed.
It's commercial across the street, though.
Well, I'll tell you what.
They knew it was commercial across the street. So, I understand now.
It should be sixty feet here.
Right. So it's going to sixty-five.
Matt, go ahead.
Commercial's a hundred feet.
It's Matt's turn.
Right.
Already entitled. So, yeah, I haven't heard anything else from any other neighbors, just the ones across the street, and again, I commend the applicant for being a good neighbor, and I wish she would have more of that. And he says, I'll do what I can to help you out. It is a whole, it's a football field away, it's three hundred feet, so. And the other thing is, looking at the picture, is that with the height, the top, I don't know how big the parapet wall is, but the windows aren't at the top of the building. They're still a four-story building, so you don't have the full.
It's good ten feet.
Yeah, maybe ten-feet-ish lower for the windows, so that helps the view as well. And it's a much-needed amenity in the community, a hotel of this caliber, and I think it's going to be very helpful to them all as well.
Depends who you talk to, councilman.
Anybody else have any other?
Something needed in our community or not.
Donna?
You know, and I just want to, you know, reflect on what others have said, and I thank you for being that good neighbor, because I think that you have listened, and the fact that there was information about parking and, you know, the privacy, I feel like you answered all their questions, and the fact that when P and Z met and they, they weren't there, and they weren't still complaining, and they're not here tonight, I feel like, you know, their concerns were met, and I feel like that, you know, the due diligence on your part has been done, so I thank you for that.
The due diligence on the people who live out there, though, hasn't been.
Bob?
James, does forty-five feet limit them to three stories, or can they even get three stories in that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Huddleston, it's possible to construct a three-story building with forty-five feet of height, but they're requesting a fourth story, and I believe because of the brand of the hotel with conference space on the first floor, it's probably going to have, the first floor is probably going to be taller than your standard floor distance, and so because of the nature of this building, they're requesting sixty-five feet to fit the four stories.
Well, and you answered part of my second question. Have they talked about amenities, bar, restaurant, conference area?
Pool.
There is a outdoor pool proposed and then conference spaces, I mentioned, but the applicant can speak to the other amenities that he's planning for this building.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right. Now, this is.
So how high are we going to let it be?
Well, they're asking for it to allow it to go to sixty-five feet.
About forty-five feet.
The application's in, and so we'll be voting on that. But this is a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing, and if there's anybody here to speak on item L four, now would be your opportunity. Ash, did you want to say anything about the amenities, or you're good? This is your opportunity, so.
Mayor, councilmember, staff, citizens, the proposed project is four stories because you have to get an ROI when you build a project. And when we picked the location, we had to work very diligently with Lamar in Chicago and New Jersey and everywhere else to be able to get the location. We were cognizant of the fact that it had already been part of a master plan and zoned correctly, where we would not be adding any more traffic, that we're in a location where when a customer parks the car, they're able to walk to all the amenities and spend the money in the area. As we worked with the mall, the other businesses within the mall, you know, came out ideas that PetSmart said, hey, we don't mind you coming there, but we'd like you to be pet-friendly, which we are pet-friendly. We're providing a dog park along with a patio on the north side so that there is no impact on the south side. So all the amenities, the pool, the patio, the dog park will go on the north side. One of the amenities that the city needed was modern conference space, and that was a conversation we've had, you know, with economic development and the community and understanding, you know, the businesses and the demand that's coming into Casa Grande. So we planned a conference space as large as we could within the confines of the three-and-a-half acres, but only three acres is buildable because the access road that goes on the east side into the mall, that is part of our parcel that is unbuildable or not usable for the hotel itself, but the whole mall community. So what we did was to mitigate everything, we moved the building as further north as possible, so instead of the sixty-five feet, we went to eighty-five feet and provided an extra twenty feet of buffer on the setback. And in order to have the conference space, in order to have the quality and the type of hotel that we're building, even Marriott has a minimum standard on the heights that you have on the first floor, so that you can have all your sewer runs, your utilities, everything in the chases so that it can support the other floors. If we reduce the size to three stories, economically, this project does not work. And majority of the height, once we've exhausted for the four stories, is the parapet that will hide the A C units, the elevator runs, and everything else that is put on top of the roof, so that we don't put it on the ground and aesthetically change what's on the ground. And that's how most of these prototype buildings are done. As far as amenities are concerned, we will have both extended-stay component, which is high-end, that is needed by all the businesses moving into town, and a lot of that business we're seeing is being diverted into Chandler and Phoenix because they're not able to find a Marriott or a Hilton-quality asset with meeting space, with extended stay, and the amenities of a modern gym, modern public areas. So we'll be providing all of that. We have worked with the city, they've been awesome, coming up with a landscape plan that will bring enough buffer on both sides, along the property line as well as in the front, where we have, you know, proposed helping the HOA at Mission Royale to plant some trees, which was the suggestions of the residents that live the eight, I think, homes that are impacted right in the front, and we continue to discuss those, and we're very open to be that. From a historical perspective, I'm in Arizona, and I've been in Arizona over thirty-two years, almost thirty-three, started my career here, I was in Flagstaff for eighteen and fourteen in Mesa, and I've had properties in Flagstaff, Sedona, Pinetop, Payson, and then in multiple states, but I've always been in Arizona, and that's why, you know, when we come into a community, you know, we'd like to be part of the community and help in any way that we can. And so I look forward to work with Mission Royale and see where we can help mitigate some of these concerns.
Thank you, thank you. All right, is there anyone else from the public who's here to speak on item L four? Okay, seeing no one, then I'll close the public hearing, and I'm going to call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
An ordinance of the Council of the City of Casagrande, Arizona, approving a major amendment to the Casagrande Regional Shopping Center planned area development for property generally located north of Florence Boulevard and east of Mission Parkway, Casagrande, Arizona.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance one-one-seven-eight-point-two-three-six-point-four as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell.
Do you really want to know? I'm very disappointed that we don't consider people that have been there, have spent their money, have their homes, don't want to see huge deals behind them and around them, they've paid for it. There's area out there they're going to grow crops on, and the people that have that don't want to see what you're going to put up. And I really am disappointed in our council, and I don't think we're abiding by what Casagrand would really want. Thank you.
Is that a no?
That's a no, no, no.
Okay.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, that concludes tonight's business. We do have reports left, so I'm going to start over here with you, Bob.
No report, Mayor, other than have a happy Thanksgiving.
All right, thank you. You too. Lisa?
Thank you.
Just quickly, Councilmember Powell and I spent the day last week at the, we went to the H O H P flag raising of the new building. That was really nice. It's, oh, the mayor, too. Well, he was like with me, I actually picked him up and was taking him around.
He was hanging out.
At the new, the new building, so great building, it was great to be there with. All the veterans are excited to see that. And then we went to the Gilbert Days Pony Express, so they come down with their pony and take the mail, and of course, I was glad to have the celebrity there because of all the Gilbert people were just so happy to see Councilmember Powell, and, you know, sad to see that his store isn't there anymore, but they all knew him and were really happy to see him, so I filled in for the mayor.
So did you see somebody get a hat?
And yes, yep, and Mr. Weaver here had Dick go and get his.
He looks good in a hat, boy.
Yeah.
Mr. Powell, oh, and Lisa, you weren't? Go ahead, sorry.
Yes, and then, and then finally, you know, we talk a lot about, you know, multifamily housing and single-family rentals, and, you know, the mayor and I, of course, with staff, met with the new, the plant manager of Kohler and their H R manager, and, you know, one of the things that they brought up, the H R manager, was housing, and not houses, but, you know, they're going to be employing five hundred people in the next few years, and they're already getting people that are asking about multifamily housing, you know, apartments, and, you know, the availability, and she said that, you know, it, you know, it's hard when you have some of these young engineers and, you know, people that don't want a house but want apartments, and, you know, we don't have them. Now, of course, we have them on the horizon, they're coming, but, you know, it looks like we're building a lot of these, but there's a demand, and this is just one company that was literally expressing their interest and concern. So anyways, but it was great to meet with them, and the H R person from Kohler is from Coolidge. She actually grew up in Coolidge and moved back and is so happy to be working here at Kohler, so that was great.
Yes, sir, you're next.
That's it, that's it, Mayor.
I had quite an experience. I've had this one eye that had cancer in it, a basal cell, and... it completely out and pulled the, pulled the sewing that was done on it, and, but I went up to Mayo Clinic, and, and I, I got a hundred percent on non-cancer, but this doctor looked down and she said, "Oh, my God." She says, "You're two-hundred-and-three on the top." She said, "You're about to fall. You need to get to Phoenix and get a hospital." So, we did, we went into Phoenix. My brother, my son and I, we coasted into Chandler and pulled into their place, but don't ever go there if you don't have to. The doctor wasn't going to show up till about midnight, and we'd been in there before the sun had gone down, and, and we didn't have much to do except want to get back to Casa Grande, so. That has turned out good. I've got a, a daughter that's getting a deal where I can actually check and, and keep track of it, which I need to do, apparently. But, as I say, it, it was kind of scary. She just really blew it. She said, "You're going to, you're going to have a deal right now. You're going to go to the ground." And, and so, it was, it was really good to get back in Casa Grande and in decent shape. Thank you.
Don't get yourself worked up here.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Matt?
So, with that, it's Mr. Powell's second-to-last regular meeting, and we're going to, you know, we're still friends, but I love you.
Exactly.
And thank you. I'm glad you're feeling better and you're here.
Well, thank you, sir.
And then, you know, the one week that our city attorney's off, I had a question from a citizen that required legal expertise. Monday morning, first thing, and Mark Graffius was on it and got me everything I needed, so thank you very much. I didn't just make that up, it was a real legitimate thing. And for the first time in twelve or fourteen years, the youth commission has started building their float before the day of the parade. So, I'm pretty excited, and I want to thank the, the Public Works Department for letting us park down there at the South Operations Center, and worked out pretty good. And then, something else, you know, this Friday's big game, so go Sun Devils. That's what I have to say. So, thank you.
All right. Donna?
Just quickly, congratulations. Firefighter Tyler Bogard, I think is the name, was honored by the Elks at their first responders banquet last week. It was really nice to see him in the paper. Also, I attended the Main Street Annual Board Meeting with McKenzie last week. That was nice to get to talk to some of the board members. We were at the sculpture at the community center. If you haven't been by to see the new sculptures, they are just beautiful. And then, also, just a reminder, Thanksgiving is right around the corner. The elementary school district has a weekend backpack program where they need lots of peanut butter and jelly, so they can make sure the kids have something to eat on the weekends when they're away. So, if anybody wants to do that, you can drop it off here at the library or at the elementary school district. So, if you would do that. And Small Business Saturday is coming up, so go downtown and buy lots of good stuff and have a great Thanksgiving.
Thanks, Donna. Mr. Lavender?
Real short, Mayor, you gave the keynote presentation at the Optimus Club Youth Appreciation Breakfast. It was a very nice event that the Optimus Club put on for our students from St. Anthony's, the Lago Cactus and Casa Grande Middle School. You did a great job, and although you definitely were not on your A-game, this is the day after the election loss, and you let everybody know.
That I was disappointed?
It was two days after our election loss. It was a disappointing loss, and I think as we, at the, at the district level schools and looking at the city results, I think we've gotten away from knocking on doors, making phone calls, and those things that are going to change elections, I think are... Casa Grande resident Teresa Martinez did those things, and she ran a very effective campaign, and congratulations on her being majority leader. And I'm also excited that Juan Siscomani is going to be representing our community now. He made a real effort to get up here and campaign a lot in this community and build those relationships with us, and I know that he will be very open to hearing from us and moving forward. So, congratulations to both Teresa and Juan for their victories and...
Yeah, definitely. Thank you, Jeff. We will be having a, a special council meeting on Monday, November twenty-eighth, at four-thirty. It is to canvass the vote. The county did not give us the, their canvas of the vote in time for us to do it tonight, so we, we are calling an emergency meeting because that is the last day that we can approve the vote. So, important that everybody be there, and important, it, it won't be a long meeting, but it, it is an important meeting. And canvass of the vote means we, we validate the, the voting. Well, lots of stuff going on. We had, I had several roundtable meetings last week. I had the mayor's education roundtable where we talked about the progress meter and how important these measures are for our education system, and that post-secondary attainment is extremely important. In the state of Arizona alone, in the next five years, each year, we will be ten thousand four-year degrees short for all the jobs that are in Arizona. That's ten thousand a year. There's another number out there that's a national number that about, it's ten point, there's ten-point-seven million industrial sector jobs that are open across the country And we only have five-point-eight workers that are not working, five-point-eight million workers that aren't working. So, you could do the math. And if you, I've always said that when you get below four percent or three percent unemployment, they're questionable anyway. So, anyway, we have a hiring crisis in the country right now. And so, we're, we're trying hard, working with C A C, working with our high schools, even our elementary schools, to make sure that we are building people up to find them good working jobs. We're bringing lots of jobs in, but we have to find those workers. So, everything we can do to get those folks in town. I also was a speaker at the Arizona Town Hall last week on mental health, and it was really on substance abuse, mental health, and homelessness, and how do they, how they kind of go together. And so, it was a good, good group, a good convening of, of, of a lot of different types of people, even those who, who were addicted and now are not. So, it was, it was interesting to hear their stories. We did the mayor's reading program last week, so that was good, met the Kohler manager, that was good. We did the sculpture dedication. We also had the final meeting of the airport master plan, so that, that was the final meeting last week, and we did the final public hearing. Actually, it's not the final public hearing, but it was the final for, for the last two sections of the master plan. But the master plan looks really good, so I'm excited to see it come out in its final version. Tomorrow, we're giving away pie and milk at all the boys and girls clubs, so if you're, if you want to help, about three-thirty or so, we'll be handing out some pies to all the, all the young people. I, I get to go to the lounge, so I'm going to get the older people. So, should be fun. And I think that's all I've got. Actually, I have more, but I'll, I'll leave it alone. Happy Thanksgiving, every, happy Thanksgiving, everyone, and have a safe travels if you're going somewhere. Don't go on I-ten, it's terrible. Meeting adjourned.